Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Ethan.
All right. Ethan, just so you know, we are live, we're live streaming on YouTube already. I'm trying to be as efficient as we can be.
Check you out.
All right. I guess we can wait for Anita. Time is it? Five o'clock?
It's right on five now, yep.
I'll messenger. All right, I just messaged her. I don't know if you want to start. I think we got everyone here, Ethan.
Well, yeah, I think we can wait just a minute or two for her.
All right. She says she's joining.
Okay.
Perfect.
Alrighty. This is the Camden Planning Board Meeting of April 7th. We have a few things on the agenda. The agenda did change. We're not going to have the hearing on the site plan review.
Well, Ethan, I think for clarity purposes, I think the agenda for the most part stayed the same. We're just going to open it and continue it.
Okay, okay, I understand that. Yep, sorry, that's right. I remember that in emails.
Other, so I guess the agenda did change because let's do a number four workshops.
Right.
Quickly.
That could technically be a 2A. Or 2.5.
2.5, sure.
Yeah.
All right, Anita is still not with us.
Okay. So first thing I guess we'll do is we'll have any public comments on non-agenda items.
There she is. Perfect. I've got none.
Okay. All right, seeing none.
And maybe I can introduce this one, Ethan, if you want to, so we can at least understand why we're doing this.
Okay. The next item on the agenda will be the site plan review for a pier at 260 Bayview Street. And I'll turn it over to Jeremy to explain what's going on with that.
All right. I think I'll do this as tactfully as I can. So we have a couple of things playing out here. We have Harbor Committee. I will say that this pier has been in the works for about three years. Whole host of issues, COVID permitting issues, not on like regulatory side, but on the permitting end of for the client. Prior to Gartley and Dorsky joining to help them. And then we have the Select Board and the Harbor Committee Review Process under the Harbor Ordinance. And then throw in the moratorium ordinance that is going to voters in June for peers and other similar structures in the coastal and outer harbor that's going to voters. The Select Board in their review of the Harbor Ordinance. I guess there's some, not a whole lot of clarity in the ordinance and the Harbor Ordinance side on which comes first, Select Board or Planning Board. The town's been doing this this way for 20 years. And past practice and interpretation has been that the Select Board is the final say on a pier. I think some of the Select Board think the process should be a little different in the planning board go be before the Select Board. It's kind of at odds with the ordinance because the ultimate permitting authority for a pier is actually the Select Board. So they get to review it. And they're the ones who issued the permit. You guys just approve it under site plan review. So that's where we are. And this, this, this kind of came in. We had scheduled a hearing based on when the applicant came in for site plan approval, not under the Harbor Ordinance, but under the Site Plan Ordinance. And there's a pretty strict format and timeline and guidelines on when someone submits an application for allowed use, you have to hear it by a certain date. So we actually published this hearing a couple of weeks ago. That's how long it takes to do hearings. Get them noticed in the paper locally, actually. Sometimes we end up doing notices in the Kennebec Journal because they can do them overnight. As opposed to local newspapers, it can be quite challenging from a timeframe. So we had scheduled this for April 7th. Coincided with this Harbor Committee reviewed this just yesterday morning. And they did review it and approve it, I will say, or they're making a recommendation for approval to the Select Board through their process. And I just felt, I think, just due to the kind of the politics of it all, and the Harbor Committee just reviewing it just yesterday with no chance for them to prepare a report for you all, like you got the last time. I think it's prudent to move this to another hearing, another date. And under the ordinance, since we do have a public hearing advertised, what, what I'm hoping is is that we just open the hearing, open the review, and then continue it to a date certain. That date certain is guided by the zoning ordinance and the timeframes for submittal and review and approval or disapproval or approval with conditions. Technically, you have to review the project for, you have to approve it, approve it with conditions or disapprove it within 60 days of their submittal. 60 days gets us to May 12th. And that would be the day after Hanaford Public Hearing for their Clink Building that's proposed for May 5th. I think the applicant is willing. I spoke with Bill Lane. He's here on behalf of Gartley and Dorsky, Vice President for, with Gartley and Dorsky. I spoke with him today, and I think he's amenable to the May 19th. That's beyond the 60 days. I'd like to stay within the 60-day frame period of time if possible. Rather than put this out. I mean, if, if, if the Harbor with the moratorium ordinance doesn't pass and this gets through you folks and the Select Board, you know, they're going to want to get their project moving would be my guess. So you know, I think trying to get their approvals in place sooner than later is appropriate for the applicant. And that's what the ordinance says. So
And Jeremy, can, can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but
It's fine.
Could you, could you explain a little bit more in detail what's going on with the Harbor Ordinance? And the moratorium, because it's, it's, I think, I know it's, I know it's ready at hand for you, but I'm not sure it is for the rest of the board.
Sure. So while, right after the week after, couple of weeks after you approved the last pier, the Select Board had an agenda item on discussing possible moratorium for peers. And a moratorium ordinance is an ordinance that's allowed, it has to go to voters, goes through the process to get to voters. And then a municipality has 180 days to review their ordinance. You have to find, you have to draft an ordinance that defines, there's a whole host of things that there's, you know, public necessity, emergent issues, yada, yada, yada. And you have to plan for that in the ordinance. And then you have 180 days to come up with proposed changes to your ordinance that could address the issues that you've identified in the moratorium ordinance. And we've identified things like I drafted it, it's, it's available for public comment, it's going to voters. Ecological issues, access, sea level rise, those kinds of things are contemplated. And in the past, Harbor Committee and the Select Board have reviewed, and I think the Planning Board as well, possible changes to the Harbor Ordinance to write, to look at these other issues until the actual, you know, do we want as many peers as where people can have out there in the harbors? Those eventually kind of never got to voters. If it goes back to like 2014, 15, if I remember, and even before that, a lot of time was spent on it. And it never got to voters. And now the Select Board currently has an interest in that, getting it to voters and addressing some of these issues in the Harbor Ordinance. So
And by getting it to voters, you mean in June?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. And so it seems like it's a little bit on an accelerated schedule.
Well, it is on the warrant. It's already been approved. It's on the warrant. So this is effective to anything that's been submitted and has not been approved by the Select Board after March 15th. So this would not affect the Rixon Pier that you approved previously, or that the Select Board approved previously. This would be anything moving forward. But that is just an ordinance going to voters to put a moratorium. And that moratorium is effective back to March 15th. So it's 180 days. By June, we'll already be 90 days into it. So we're going to have to go out 90, we're going to have to address these ordinance changes relatively quickly.
And those ordinance changes are the purview of the Planning Board, the Harbor Committee, or the Select Board, or all of us?
I think a little bit of both. The Harbor Ordinance certainly addresses these issues, and the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance also has, has requirements in there. So it's both. And we're going to look at it, whether we can do it all in 90 days. Once June happens, I don't know. I think the reality is, is probably we'll get stuff together. Probably do an emergency meeting or a special town meeting to push it out again for a certain period of time to get it to voters in November would be my guess. That's just my guess. Meanwhile, you have an applicant that is legally allowed to do what they want to do, and there is no ordinance that prevents them. And so we need to kind of move this train along with the understanding that the ordinance may, the moratorium may not pass. And, you know, they got the right to do this. So that's where we are. That's what the moratorium ordinance is. I can, I can send it to you all tomorrow for you guys to review if you want and look at it. It's available on the
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in what the, the specific concerns are. I got the generalization of it, and I
Most of it has to do with, most of it has to do with building them to withstand sea level rise. To be honest.
Yeah.
Out on the coastal harbor is a little different than the outer harbor. If you look at the ordinance requirements, I think you can go two feet higher in the coastal harbor than you can in the, in the outer harbor. So
Yeah.
So there is that, you know, they're not the same. The ordinance, the Harbor Ordinance actually looks at the inner and outer harbor with the same review criteria. At the Harbor Committee the other day, they, they thought that was a little odd that the coastal harbor and the outer harbor have the same review criteria because they're very different places.
Yeah.
You know, so that's where that is. So I'm hoping that you guys can just open this, need this, this site plan review and public hearing and schedule it for, continue it to May 12th, if you guys are willing to do a May 5th and a May 12th back to back.
We get bonus pay for that one, right?
You do. In Christmas time, you may get some rum cake, too.
It's 200% of our usual pay.
Can I, can I get a motion on that? Or Ethan, you want to get a motion in a second and continue it?
Yep. I, I know, I'm, I'm looking to my motion, man.
Well, do we need to first call it, open the hearing and then make a motion to table? Is that what we would do?
We do, and we should probably make Pat a member. Voting member.
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah. So first, I'll just say that Pat Chan, an alternate, is going to be a voting member tonight at the hearing. Anita, I see your hand up. You're on mute.
I wanted to remind you that I will not be here in the country for those for that period. I'm coming back. I'll be back into play on the 12th of May. Leaving at the end of April.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll be back for May 12th.
Yeah.
This is hoped for, May 12th. You'll be there.
Be home by 5:00 PM.
We're just at a computer.
Yeah, at a computer is fine.
All right.
Okay, so we've got Pat on as a voting member, which will give us the form we need and and going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the proposed pier at 260 Bayview Street. And based on what Jeremy has said, now, Crystal, I think you're in play.
I'll just make a motion that we label this till May 12th due to various external issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me. The motion carries. The hearing for the pier at 260 Bayview Street is continued until May 12th.
At 5:00.
At 5:00.
And that may, just so you all know, that likely will be a hybrid. That's what I'm shooting for. So we'll be in person and some can be away if needed.
Okay. Yep.
Well, thanks, Bill. Anything to say?
Thank you for your time this evening. We look forward to seeing you on the 12th.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
At least you didn't have to come into the office or to the hearing room.
Oh, well, anyway, if it works for the board, it's fine.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is not on the written agenda is 2.5 workshops. And
It could be three. Why don't we do that at 3.5?
Okay, I mean
Next meeting's at 3, at 3, on the item 3.
Okay, usually next meetings is right before we close out, but I'm fine with that.
Well, we can't discuss anything because nothing was put on the agenda.
Okay.
So we're mending the agenda to add workshops dates to it. Okay?
Okay. I see what you're saying.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so item number three on the agenda are the next meetings. As Jeremy has said, we have an onsite pre-application meeting for Hanaford. That's the little clink shed that they're going to put in for recycling containers. Jeremy, do you want to just touch on that for a second?
Sure. Hanaford is proposing to put one of their Clink Buildings. I don't know if you've seen them at other locations. Normally, they do them inside. They're running out of space. So they're going to put this outside. It's going to be outside tucked back into the right-hand corner. If you're looking at Hanaford from the street, kind of where that side street, access to the side street comes in, is where it's proposed. So rather than doing, setting up a meeting and doing a pre-app meeting to then say, okay, let's schedule a site visit. I talked with Hanaford and I said, you know, what makes a whole lot of sense. And when we do site visits, normal, we can't discuss anything, right? We just sit there and we look at things. And so I felt it prudent, and I think probably the better way to do, especially something like this, is to do the pre-app in the field. That way, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone. Town Attorney likes the idea. April 14th at 2:00 PM is what I was hoping for, and that works for Hanaford. Does that work for anybody? We could do it earlier or later, too. I mean, I prefer to do it
What was the time?
2:00.
That's okay for me.
Is that a Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Um. Yeah, it would need to be wrapped by 2:45.
You want to do 1:30 or 1?
Works better for me.
That's okay.
Pat?
Yep, that's good.
Thumbs up, Andy?
No, I'm out of town next week. I'll be on the West Coast next Thursday.
So what, 11, 11:30?
So what time is it? 1:00 or 1:30?
Whatever works for you guys. 1:00?
1:00 is fine.
It's fine with me. I don't need it to be that early, but that's fine.
Okay.
We just need to advertise it. We're going to have to advertise that tomorrow.
Right.
And I'll let Mark know. Anita, are you around or no? Oh, perfect. Perfect. So we'll do that next, next Thursday at 1:00. Perfect.
Got it.
And I'm going to ask them to actually kind of stripe out where it's going to be. I'm sure they'll just get there an hour earlier and stripe it out and, and we'll be good. I will send, they did send copies of the site plan, the proposed plan, and I'll send those to you guys so you have them. I'll try to get those out tomorrow. Next one would be the site plan review for that project. I, I, May 5th is what I'm looking at.
Yep.
Sound good? Do you guys like 5:00 or do you like 4:00? I mean, I don't know.
5 is better than 4 for me.
Perfect, 5:00 on the 5th. Pat, that's good for you?
Yes, it is, Jeremy. Thanks.
Andy, are you around on the 5th?
I can do remote on the 5th.
Perfect. Great. And Mark Siegenthaler said he'd be available. So that works.
And that's the pre-application meeting for Hanaford's?
No, we're going to do the pre-application meeting in person on site.
At the sidewalk, right?
At the sidewalk. It just, to me, makes a lot more sense to do it this way. You'll have the application materials. You can actually talk to the engineer about the project rather than going to do a sidewalk and not being able to ask questions.
Okay.
Doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's a pretty minor project, to be honest with you.
All right.
All right. And then next would be workshops. And workshops, I was, we need to get to sea level rise and floodplain issues, which means height, especially in the harbor area, and height of buildings. And so I'm going to draft, I guess we can talk about it, but I don't think we can really right now because it's not on the agenda. But I was going to try to draft an amendment that I have a new floodplain ordinance to bring forward that you guys can review, but it's not really your purview necessarily. That I'm going to try to say, go to two feet above base flood elevation for any substantial improvement or new buildings. And so what I'm going to try to do is tie the building height definition, tie the floodplain issue and two feet above base flood into the high building height definition. So if you are in the flood zone and you're doing a substantial improvement, you have to meet the current standard, except you're allowed, if you're in the floodplain, you're allowed to go two feet, two feet or five feet higher than what the current standard is because you're in a, in this flood zone, potential sea level rise area. That's kind of how I'm approaching that one. And I think that's probably the easiest and probably cleanest and smartest way to do it, rather than getting a lot of people's knickers in a knot over, if I can say that, over, you know, view restrictions and those kinds of things. It would only take place if someone was doing a substantial improvement or a brand-new building in the flood zone. Does that make sense? That's kind of what I'm thinking. And then, and then short-term rentals. I know that this came up when the Select Board discussed at the public hearing, the zoning amendments that you folks moved on to them. And they moved them all to voters, so that's good. But they did question what happens if we start getting a lot of these builds. We may get more builds and people just do them for short-term rentals. They did mention about trying to address that. So that is, I think, your purview. Certainly, if you want to go down that road, Ethan mentioned it as being something he wanted to talk about. So I'd like to
Can I just, can I just speak to that real quick? I know we're not going to have a grand workshop discussion on it, but my general perspective on it is that we are, we're trying to do these housing options and housing, affordable housing and all these other things. And I think one of the real issues that's sort of the elephant in the room is the short-term rental market. And the, the, what, I did actually attend, or maybe, I think I watched it afterwards, but I did watch the, the Select Board meeting where they reviewed our ordinance proposals. And they raised some decent questions about, you know, why we didn't address short-term rentals in some of those proposals. And, you know, it's, it's a fair question. However, it is a much bigger topic. And so we were looking to get things to the voters on the, on this other sort of discrete piece of providing more opportunity for building and that sort of thing and other, you know, multifamily and that sort of thing. And but it, it, it strikes me that, you know, the legislature is considering some things. Other towns have taken some action. And if, if we're looking at one of them, one of the primary causes of, of lack of affordable housing, and by affordable, I don't mean low income. I mean, actually, you know, just affordable per median income here in town. I, I would guess that unhosed and short-term rentals in particular are a fair part of that problem. And, and that's, that's why there's motivation on my part to look at it. I did send out some, some ordinances and some, some, I, you know, FAQs and stuff about how the other towns are handling it. And if you look through those, you'll notice that like Cape Elizabeth has a pretty draconian ordinance. I mean, it's, it's pretty heavy. They're pretty much not allowing unhosed rentals at all. And they limit even adjacent hosted, you know, sort of adjacent hosted rentals, like a, an accessory dwelling or something like that to 42 days. And then they limit a hosted rental where you leave the property, but you allow someone to live in your house to like 105 days. So they have
Do you mean you, that's the minimum amount of time?
That is the maximum amount of time you may rent the, you know, it doesn't matter the division of the time per se. It's just you can only rent it for 105 days total out of the year.
Oh, total, okay.
Or 42 days or whatever. So that, but you can look at those FAQs and you'll see they don't allow unhosed and short-term rentals at all. And I think that's a bit draconian. Other places like Bar Harbor are looking at, they, they do something like 9% of the entire, you know, 9% of the total residential properties would be the, the cap on how many short-term rentals you could have. I think it's Kennebunkport who I didn't follow up further, but I think they do something like, they have the Select Board set each year how many short-term rentals they're going to allow. And I think, you know, these are all just ideas. I don't have a particular answer. And I don't have a particular, what I do think is that as a as a board, I think we can really take this issue. And I really think that I, I would like to see Camden at the, at the forefront of this, just like I would like to see us at the forefront of the height and the sea level rise ordinances. I think that we can be leaders. And, and we can take a little bit from what other people have done and look at it. But I do think that we can do something here that, that really does balance allowing people, property owners who live here to do stuff with their rentals, you know, the short-term rental market and prevent people from buying properties just to rent them out, which I think is a real issue in town.
Hey, oh.
Yeah.
Oh. Um. So are we looking to create new ordinances for something like the short-term rental market? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing. Basically, the first thing that came out, and Jeremy can speak to this, from a Select Board hearing, the, the, remember they did an ordinance, there was a registration ordinance, and, and the Select Board was, was batting that around and saying, well, why do we have it? What's going on with it? Is it, is it effective? And I'll summarize, but Jeremy can speak to it. The reality is that it's essentially determined that it's unenforceable. And it's unenforceable because we can't actually determine outside of someone's good faith whether or not they're in the short-term rental market outside of, you know, whether they're required to register for what reason. And that had to do, I believe, and I'll let Jeremy speak to it, but it had to do with the fact that we defined unhosed, I think, as, you know, half, 50% of the days in a year plus one. And that particular definition was outside the algorithms capability that we use for the sites that, there are, there are people who have, or businesses that survey the market and they just do a, they run, you know, scan of all the Airbnbs and everything else. And then they send you back a number like this is how many rentals, short-term rentals you have in your town. And that's, that's, that's a time saver, rather than having one dedicated person trying to monitor every site and then determine how many are actually short-term rentals, et cetera, et cetera. So Jeremy, you can speak to that real quick if you like.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. I mean, I, there was a couple of firms that we were looking to contract with to actually regulate, use our short-term ordinance that we passed. It was, it's called an unhosed and short-term registration ordinance. That definition, what our definition does not match up with their, the way that these firms and their algorithms work. So they can't, they can't whole scrub the system for the units that are based on our definition. So it's impossible. I'm just being honest. It's really impossible for us to do it unless people and neighbors are telling us and other BBs are telling us that, hey, these are renting these out at short term. So it's really hard. And, and I, that's exactly right. I think this is prime for looking at ordinances. And I think Ethan, looking at a whole host of options is what we should do and see what's right. And the Select Board's certainly going to do it. The Planning Board previously did not get involved in that short-term unhosed and short-term ordinance. That was, the Select Board decided to handle it under kind of like police powers kind of ordinance, which is, you know, it's just a registration licensing kind of ordinance, which isn't zoning. And looking at a zoning perspective is probably the best way to do it, along with licensing. So
Right. And, and, and there was a, you know, some of the motivation, like for instance, I think the Cape Elizabeth one is essentially neighborhoods and preservation of neighborhoods and the character. And if you're going to have a rental in, I read an article from one of the people, one of the guys in, in, or maybe, I'm sorry, Cape Elizabeth, yeah, said, you know, the idea is that you live on or next adjacent to your property that you're renting out. And therefore, you have to look your neighbors in the eye. You know, if you, you know, and I don't think in Camden, we're having this issue of like huge loud parties destroying neighborhoods. It doesn't seem to be, you know, to me, I haven't heard anything about that. I haven't, I haven't checked in with the police about whether they get reports of It doesn't seem to be, you know, to me, I haven't heard anything about that. I haven't, I haven't checked in with the police about whether they get reports of loud parties. Um, happening at short-term rental properties. But for us, it is more about, I think, you know, balancing. Um, you know, there's, there's, I'd, I'd say there's three competing interests. There's um, there's. You know, the, the offering of, of places, alternative places to stay to tourists and people coming to visit. I think it's great, you know. Um, they can bring a dog to some places where they might not be able to bring a dog to a hotel. Um, they can have a kitchen and cook for themselves and those sorts of things. That's great. Um, and then there's the lodging industry, obviously is gonna have an interest in this, you know, it's, you know, as far as just feeling like they're held to standards if the short-term rentals are not. And inspections and safety, and all of those things are important. And then, of course, there's the other side, which is, you know, the. Balancing the, the character of the neighborhoods, the availability of affordable housing and all of those issues that are affected by short-term rentals. Because I think we all know, Airbnb started up, it was sort of like, almost like Couchsurfing, right? It was, you know, there, there's a new app, I think, called Couchsurfing.com. Where you go and stay on someone's couch. I mean, it, it was more like you go into someone's home. And you stay in a room in their home. It was, I mean, that's why it was called Airbnb. It was a bed and breakfast. You were in somebody's home. And then people, you know, capitalism does, capitalism does, and it will all of a sudden find this opportunity. And then people are saying, well, the best thing they can do is, is um, buy up properties and put them into the short-term rental market.
Yeah, and there's real estate investment trusts that are just buying up housing all over.
Right.
For this purpose.
Yeah.
All right, so we need to schedule, we need to schedule a date for these. Um, and then we, and then we can call it quits. I know Chris has got a roll at 5:30, so.
Yeah.
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry, I talked over your limit there.
That's okay. I mean, I, I, if we're wrapping up, otherwise I'll just duck out.
Yeah, I think, I think we're wrapping right now.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna do this, this workshop on Zoom rather than in person. Perfect, and that way we can do it at any time of the day. Um, I think it's important. Any suggestions?
So this is gonna be a special meeting, Jeremy, not one of our scheduled meetings.
Right, I think that, yeah, I think we should try to just focus this on being a workshop. Kind of thing and not, not tie it to 5 o'clock on Thursday. Um, you know, we've got our other work to do and if we can.
Fridays aren't good for me.
Which day?
Fridays aren't good for me, but otherwise, um, it's usually pretty open. I'd definitely like to be present for this, so I hope you don't schedule it while I'm gone.
When are you back, Anita?
Um, I said, well. Yep, May 12th.
And when do you, when do you leave?
The.
For Australia.
Yeah, that's a different trip. That's in June. Um, were you talking about having it as late as June?
No.
I mean, it may, it's, it's probably gonna run into June, but I mean, we can, again, we can work with you, Anita. I'm trying, I, I would like you to be here too, so.
Thank you.
Um, the, you know, we're not looking to get this on the June ballot. We're looking at November, right? So.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, we're like, August, you know, August is gonna get to us and then we're gonna be like, oh, we've gotta have it already through the process in August.
Right, and that's why I hope Jeremy will keep us on, on task on that, but.
So if Anita can't make it, I think it's important. I think it's important for you to at least have discussions, even if a member can't make it. Because it's, you could watch it, Anita. It's available on YouTube. And we're gonna continue this conversation and you can share the entire time. It's not, we're not making any votes. Um, but we gotta get talking about it. So I'd prefer not to push it out way out there.
In answer to your question, um, this uh, April 26th. Is when I depart for this two-week trip. And then, um, and then I depart from here. Uh, for the longer trip on the 20th of June.
Do, okay. Do you guys want to, what about like May 12th that like? I don't know, 3 o'clock?
What about, what about the week of the 18th of April, though?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm out on Friday and Monday is a holiday.
Yeah, so I, I am uh, taking spring break. I'm going down to Revel with the, in Miami, I'm not going to Miami. Um, taking the family down to uh, to visit. Uh, but I will be here. I could do it on the 18th, which is a Monday. Not good for you, Jeremy?
Um, it's not good for me. That's a technically a holiday for me. Um, it's Patriot's Day for us. Municipal employees.
Do, do you drape yourself in the main flag and, and?
What about Tuesday the 19th? Does that work for people?
Well, I mean, I'm.
Well, what, what about next week, like?
Yeah, the 11th or the 12th or the.
And we can do it at any time during Zoom. I mean, if people can get together during the day.
Yeah, I'd just rather not have to zoom in from Florida personally, but. 19th through the 26th.
Right, so next week is what I.
Yeah, fine, next week is fine.
Well, let's do it one of those days, maybe? The 11th or the 12th or 3?
Any of those days are, any of those days are good for me.
Yeah. 11th to 12th.
I can make any of them work as well.
I, I could do this. I'm on travel, I, but I could do it on the 12th remotely, so.
April 12th, remote.
Let's aim for the 12th.
12, what time? 1 o'clock?
Yeah.
Sure.
How remote are you gonna be, Andy? Does that work for you? That'd be early in the morning?
I, I have meetings um, until like uh, 2 o'clock Eastern. So 2 o'clock Eastern is about the earliest I could.
How about 3 o'clock? Does 3 o'clock work?
Yeah.
It would have to be 3:30 for me.
Okay.
I could do 3:30.
Yep.
On Tuesday?
Yeah, the 12th.
Okay.
Works for me.
We'll do a Zoom workshop. 3:30 on the 12th. All right, I'll get an agenda out. Um, and it's just a workshop. I'll get that out um, to you guys and.
And to be clear, we're gonna workshop both items on that?
Um.
Are we gonna do one and another?
Well, what do you want? What do you want? He's leaving it up for us. He had to go.
Um, okay.
Do you want to start at least the discussion on housing first? I mean, I think the, the, the height issue, I think, is pretty easy.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I would like to do that. I think maybe a dedicated workshop to short-term housing and, and give people the. Give people the long weekend to, to review.
Yeah.
Stuff and come up with some ideas. I would love to hear some ideas, because I just did a short cursory review myself. And I will, I will be looking into it some more too.
And I'm gonna let you guys try to also like kind of carry some of the burden on this one. Um, that's all right. I'm here to support.
I think, I think that's fine. It, it's coming, it's coming from a place of motivation for me and, you know, you've done a lot. If you have, excuse me, anything that you've shared with us before, and I think you have.
I, I will get you all sorts of.
One, one email blast with all your stuff on it would be great, and then we could build off of that.
Perfect. Sounds good. We're good.
That work for everyone?
Yep.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Okay.
So the, and then the harbor issues, that'll be another workshop, the rising tide stuff.
Uh, yeah, that's kind of, I think there's, that's gonna be bifurcated in a couple of ways, because. The heights on piers is different than like the floodplain ordinance that I really wanted, I wanna look at. And the height issues that like Lyman Moore's face in their project. I think we don't want that to happen again, and I think that's an urgent scenario, so. Um, we'll try to do these in two paths. The harbor committee already, they, yesterday, they talked about looking at these things as well. And I asked Will Gartley from Gartley and Dorsky to give us his thoughts as well on what's right, what's appropriate, because you're also talking, if you raise the height. Um, there was a, a whole host of issues um, that he thought of as an engineer that I didn't even think of. You know, like slope of the ramp, those kinds of things at different hot, you know, tides. Um. It's just.
Right, the higher you go, the longer the ramp.
Yeah.
Which means at certain tides, it's gonna extend further out.
Right, and so right now we have height limits or, or length limits that limit it. And when we were talking the other day at the harbor committee, he's like, yeah, you can. You make all these changes, but if you leave the height or the length of the pier at what it is, then the ramps don't work. So, and, and often. You know, he's saying you're gonna have to extend the, the length of the pier to accommodate some of these things, so.
Is, is it possible?
Jeremy, is, is there a separate workshop on that topic that the planning board is gonna do?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that, yeah.
But we're not fixing that date tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I think Jeremy's perspective on that is that that one is a more discreet, addressable issue, not less important, but it's just. It's, it's, it's narrower. It's, it's, it's like, you know, height, how does it, you know, all the things we just talked about. But it's, it's equally important to us.
Yeah.
I think um, it would be a creative approach to um. To say, you know, um, your pier can work, but there, there will be a certain point at which it will be too steep, and that's when you don't use it. You know, I mean, you know. Places where the, the tide goes out and it's nothing but a sand flat for a mile, right? They can't bring their boats in then. They just have to wait until the tide comes in. Why can't we be more, you know, why do we have to? Build things so everybody can use their.
And I mean, there, there's even an argument to be made that why do they even need a, a private pier? You know, and, and whether we even want to allow those. And, you know, that's a whole different issue, but it is, it is a reality. I mean. I don't have a private pier. Yeah, I don't have a waterfront property, but it, you know. I, I still either get in my dinghy and row to my boat or, or take the, take the, the little shuttle from uh, you know.
I hear you.
I think our society is too used to having everything at once all the time.
Well, we're, we're starting to discuss things we probably should not discuss and talk about.
It's just something to think about.
We can't, we can't handle having a meeting that's only 37 minutes long, Jeremy. That's the problem.
Well, we'll get back to it all, okay?
Sounds good.
We good? Ready to close it up? Appreciate it.
Yeah, who, who wants to make a movement? Do we have to motion to adjourn? No? Okay, we're gonna adjourn.